I'd like to call this committee at a whole meeting for Monday, August 24th. Before we begin, I just inform you that Councilor Ross will be late and/or not making the meeting this morning. He'll make a good attempt at texting. First item on the table here is the adoption of the agenda recommendation committee to hold adopts the August 20th, 2018 agenda as presented. Move please, Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carrie. For the minutes, recommendation committee to hold adopts the July 23rd, 2018 committee of the whole minute meeting minutes as presented. Move please. Councilor Butler. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. All right, moving right along to our register petitions and delegations. First one being Gallery 2. Subject matter quarterly report presentation recommendation the committee of whole receives for information the delegation presentation from Grand Forks or Gallery Society. Councilor Thompson. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
The right button.
We didn't have any attachments. Yeah.
Good morning. Oh, there's two. Yeah, gallery. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us. I'm pleased to present our quarterly report on behalf of the staff and board at Gallery 2. So, I figured we'd start with everybody's favorite topic. The flood response. Gallery 2 was luckily not directly affected by the flooding. We were obviously evacuated and staff were impacted. We were, our goal during the flood was to be nimble and able to provide decent information to citizens and get up and running as quickly as possible. Part of that was we were able to accommodate Service PC. They needed to be up and running within 24 hours, so we were able to come in on the weekend and get them set up in our boardroom. That has transitioned to a temporary setup in the, well, temporary in quotes, more permanent setup in the Heritage Gallery. We've been able to accommodate them. They're going to be back in their location in October. We're happy to host them and we're thrilled that they'll be able to get back in their location for our one case in time visit. So, it's been great. The opportunity has been for, there's a lot of people coming to Service PC that don't usually come to the gallery, or the last time they came to the gallery was in the basement of the library. So, it's been a good community building opportunity for us as well. The other thing we've been able to do is say yes to things. One of those was the Movies After Dark program. We were able to move it to the gallery grounds if City Park wasn't up and running for them. And we've added extra hours to provide access to washrooms and power during that event. And I think it's been quite successful this summer. So, summer highlights. We've been doing a lot of behind the scenes things. We are fortunate to have been able to upgrade our telephone system, which was circa mid-'80s. Thank you to the Regional District who provided us a grant and aid for the capital cost of the telephone equipment. It's really a partnership between the gallery, the school district, and city staff. And it's really fantastic that such a small organization is able to be, access those resources. We structured it as a yearly operating fee rather than a large technical replacement, which means that the gallery is able to maintain the equipment and as things need to be replaced, the resources will be there for it. So, we don't need to be looking for tens of thousands of dollars to replace network here as things become obsolete. The other benefit is because we were doing this, we're essentially on the same network as the city, so the IT team was able to tie in Service PC directly through the network and segregate them onto their own network through the infrastructure. So, it's a really nimble, great setup that we have between the city and the gallery and the school district. We've also, thrilled to announce, we received a Phoenix Foundation grant back in March for exterior signage and wayfinding updates. So, we're putting together a design development package to update the exterior signage at the gallery. What's happened is over the years, things have evolved organically and we have a bit of a mishmash of signage going on there. So, it's part of this brand consistency piece that we've been working on and I think you'll be pleased with the results in that. That's going to be rolling out throughout the fall. It's not something you want to rush, you want to give it right. Our Children's Summer Art Camps has been a great success. Adventures in Art has been running Thursday afternoons. We had several kids come in for multiple camps throughout the summer and then lots of drop-ins. We were also able to accommodate Roots &amp; Wings daycare worked with us to offer two one-week day camps for their kids, which is the three to five-year-old set. So, we've really been able to get kids from age three to age 15 into the gallery this summer. Our Starlight Benefit ticket raffle, Mary Sebastian, congratulations. She won the eight-course dinner for herself and seven of her friends. And we just finished Taps &amp; Tapas III on Friday night. It was a fantastic success. We sold out. It's, so thanks to the staff and the board and everybody who attended. It's a really successful fundraiser. It was a great success. So, moving on to the core of what we do as an art gallery, we have some great exhibitions on right now. If you haven't been down, check out Domestic Flights. Lulun is a WinLa-based artist. She's internationally renowned. It's a beautiful show. I can't really say much for that. In the Fog Gallery, we have, from the Alberta Printmakers Society, we have an artist book show that's 12 artists and 12 authors are paired together to do interpretations of text. That's been really successful. And then complementing that, in the West Gallery, is an installation piece also based around bookworks, Willa Dowling, called The Space Between. Both shows go until September 8th, so you have a couple of weeks. And then starting September 15th, we have our fall exhibitions in the main gallery. It's a group show, all contemporary interpretations of Canadian landscape through painting and tapestry. Our local artist Darlene Dattel is going to be in the Fog Gallery. This is going to be a really fun show. She's done a different work in a different medium every month, and it's called When I Grew Up. And it's really a play and a celebration on her passion for art. And then in the West Gallery, we have Wildfire That Begats Suburbia, which is quite timely. It's a series of photos that were taken after the Okanagan on fire. And it questions suburban development and wildfires. They're going to be quite beautiful and a nice counterpoint to the other one we are. So, that we have, we're trying to do artist talks the night before our opening, so we're having a sneak exhibition peek at artist talk on the Friday at 7:00 PM. As usual, our opening receptions are from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and the artists will be in attendance. And then this year, we're doing more around Culture Days, which is the last weekend in September, and Darlene Dattel is going to give an artist talk for Culture Days. Also around Culture Days, we're doing our occasional community collections exhibition. This, we're soliciting work from Birch Roder, who is the secretary at Purley for a long time. I'm sure some of you have his carvings in your collections, and we're asking people to bring them in and we're displaying them downstairs in the Art Mental Gallery. And this is really an opportunity for us to send the range of community works that are out there and involve people in different ways. And then that will be on throughout October. We're going to involve the schools and community coming in for programming around that. So, our fiscal update, as of the end of July, we're thirds of the way through our fiscal year. Our revenues are pretty much bang-on at 33%. Our expenses are a bit higher, at 36%. However, this is expected at this time of year. We're open longer during the summer and we have summer students. So, one of the things I'm looking at doing is refunding our monthly reporting so it more accurately reflects these seasonal peaks. So, that's kind of an ongoing, as we get through the budget year, we'll figure that out. As I mentioned, summer is the busy season. It has, we have noticed a bit of a falloff in tourism coming through the community, but it's been, it's been steady throughout the season. And we've had a great summer staff season. We're also, I'd just like to know, we are 50% of the way through our exhibition season, so that also comes with the bump in expenses. And then our 2019 fee-for-service request, as you know, last year Gallery 2 requested a three-year funding agreement, which is part of our fee-for-service contract. So, 2019 is year two in this three-year proposal. So, we're requesting $147,739, which is a 2% escalation over 2018. And I would say stable funding, like multi-year funding requests like this really enable the gallery to continue to deliver our quality arts and culture programs to the citizens of Grand Forks. That's our core focus. The other thing about the three-year agreement is it ensures predictable funding requests from council. So, you know that we're not going to come in and ask for 10% here because we're trying to maintain stability. And then, as per Taps &amp; Tapas and other events, Gallery 2 is actively seeking opportunities to improve and increase our program offerings while maintaining our existing staff and service levels. Are there any questions?
You guys are doing a great job.
Not a question, just a comment that I'm very impressed with what you have done with the gallery, and I think that the board and yourself, Tim, have taken that.
Mr. Kip.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's really good to see all the neat things you're doing. And I really like that you're using some local artists to, you know, make their wares and their expertise known to the community. I've done some stuff with Darlene, and she's amazing. She's really a talented lady. Just was wondering, did you have quarterly financials normally? You would get a quarterly financial with your report.
That was sent, that was sent to Council, Mr. Mayor, a couple of weeks ago through the weekly information summary, but I do have the, here's where.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
They're on the screen right now. If you want a copy again, Councilor.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. I think I forgot my emails. Thank you.
Councilor Abbott.
Yeah, I've always been a strong supporter of the gallery, and I really love what you're doing there. I think it's wonderful for the community to have this gem in our midst. We're very fortunate. One thing that concerns me was the increase that you're asking for, 2%. I know a few years ago, the mayor made it clear to all the fee-for-service groups that they were going to start, or council was going to start looking at cutting back on some of that, hoping that the organizations that we feed, we provide funding to would become more self-sufficient in their fundraising ability and be sustainable and that there would not be any increases in fee-for-service. So, I know, I see what you're doing, and I think it's wonderful. And I'm just wondering if there's any way that you could work around that without having any increase? I mean, 2% doesn't sound very substantial, but when we're talking those kind of numbers, it adds up. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't turn it down for that, but I just want to know if there's any way you could work around without having to ask for an increase.
That's a great question. Thank you for your support. Thanks everyone for your support. I would say part of what Gallery 2 offers through our fee-for-service agreement with the city provides tremendous value for the funding provided. And we see the lot of escalation as essentially covering cost of living increases and everything costs more. So, it's really part of the sustainability piece is that compared to, to stable funding that we're able to fund our services for the city, because we do a lot with a little in terms of being able and efficient with our funds.
Councilor Butler.
Just to clarify then, this is part of the three-year contract we entered into last year with this agreement of the 2% increase, so it's already been, that's what I had.
Yeah, and, and thanks for that clarification. But yeah, this, this would be year two of the three-year.
Okay.
Any other questions? You're enough. Thank you for your presentation, committee. All those in favor have received. Opposed, so Carrie. And the follow-up to that recommendation is that fee-for-service request be forwarded to the 2019 budgeting process. Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. All right, moving on to 4B. Subject matter again from the delegation is the Boundary Museum Society quarterly report presentation. Recommendation is committee of whole receives for information the delegation presentation for the Boundary Museum Society. Move please. Good morning and welcome.
Oh, good morning. Good morning, everybody. We're really happy to be here today. Sorry, I have to read and look. So, we are quick to start off with introducing on the next slide. Oh, I have to do it. Sorry. So, we held our AGM on May the 26th because we had to reschedule due to the flood. Our AGM was supposed to happen the day, what was it, May the 12th? And of course, we don't know what May the 10th was. So, this is our board. This is who was elected. We have Lee Tossop as the president, Bob McTalbish as vice treasurer, Kathy Rush, Monica Coles-Hale, and Secretary Sam Sevigny as a director, and Joe Titangell. Here's a picture of them. Sorry. Can I go back?
No.
Yeah.
The little one.
This one, yeah. Whoa, okay, so that was at our AGM. We had about 17 people participate in that. And so, that's what our medium looks like when we set up for an AGM as well. So, now we've got this picture we haven't got. We've had a lot of visitors coming to the museum due to the flood, and many of them found a new location in the Sunshine Valley Community Service. We have them come up every Thursday, and they do crafts. So, they, they found a home up at the Boundary Museum, a temporary home. We also had, we've now had actually three Rotary meetings for the Grand Forks Rotary Club. The last time the wooden spoon was busy, the can fest, so they couldn't accommodate us, so we had to bump up to the museum. The senior branch, 68, as you know, they lost their facility down due to the flood. So, they come every Tuesday and Thursday up to the museum and they do their quilting club. The Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce has had three board meetings. Excuse me. And the Boundary Family Individual Services, they came up and have a lunch in a sort of way. There, that's what air is really bad, so I'm going to crack. So, we carried on as people do, and one of the things, one of the projects that we're working on is with the Sinoics and their Duke of Orks, the reconciliation. And Joan Hart, who is our researcher, she has done a really great job in finding, oh, thank you. It's not bad. She, she has done a really good job on the research that she's done behalf of this. We've gone to Brilliant, we've met with Marilyn James, we've seen the stone. That's not a very good picture. It does look better, not in the PowerPoint, of the stone that's in Brilliant. And it's really been a really great honor for me to be able to be participating with Joan on that. I really think she did a great job. We also had Jane, or sorry, Marilyn James and her daughter Alexis come up, and I think Hollin Ross was there for that. It was really nice. We had quite a few people, about 50 people come up and listen to her storytelling. They're, they're, she's got a book, Not Extinct, and in that is her creation stories that they told throughout time, and just really wonderful stories and a book signing. So, we held that up at the museum. All right. So, we've had three weddings up at the museum, and they've all been small weddings, no more than 50 people this year. We have a wedding book for next year of 100 people coming. And this is what it looked like as the bride walked up to this tree. Everybody resonates towards this tree that's on the Boundary grounds. It's right beside the shade house. And these weddings are just so beautiful, and the location is just so beautiful to see people come up and get married there. And we've been blessed with three weddings this year, so it's very nice. One of the things that the Boundary Museum does is work with the School District 51. And these are some of the topics that we've hit on between immigration, trading, the Sinoics history, water conservation, and this was when the flood happened, interestingly, no? Yeah, it was quite the evening. Bronwyn helped me with that one. Duke of Orks history is always a strong, strong one up at the museum, and we always show them how to do laundry, how to make butter and bread. So, here are some pictures. We develop passports this year, and our summer student Vanessa developed these wonderful passports, ports that are, they're really successful because the kids have a takeaway. And not only do they have a takeaway, but they have a fun project to do while they're there. We give them stamps, we give them stickers. There's stuff that they have to find out in the museum and find. And then you can see, this is actually what our laundry looks like up at the museum. When Lee is done with the kids, every single group comes through and they want to take home so that their mom can, they want their mom to wash laundry like this. They think it's quite smart. And I know I've talked about this before, but for some reason, this is so successful every year, you know, that we have that happen. So, we've had the sparks come up, and they do a fly-up as they graduate up into the Brownies. The grade 11 and grade 12 Roslyn High School students were the ones that came to the water conservation. They also did a visit up at the Saddle Lake. Grade 8 Russian class came and, for the Duke of Orks history, and Joan Hart had a great idea of doing a cold case on who killed J.J. Barrigan. And I'm telling you, every single kid in that place was trying to solve that mystery because they want the money. There's still, I think, a $2,000 reward that is still to this day being offered. So, you know, a lot of fun is happening up at the museum. We had a summer kickoff barbecue. Bronwyn was in charge of that. She did a wonderful job. We had the Grand Forks fighters come up, and as you can see, they had their barbecues armed and ready, and they fed quite a few people. We were able to raise over $1,000 for that fundraiser, and I think that's really great because we still are dealing with flood relief. So, we very selfishly did a fundraiser for our beautiful antique fire trucks, and we're quite happy with that. Our summer student Vanessa, she put together a wonderful display that went up to Christian Lake Homecoming, and here are pictures of what it looked like in the room, and you can see her working on it there. She, that was her project this year, and I think she did a really great representation. And the theme this year was just add water. So, she had, so it sits there, she had, here's, here's what, here's more of it, what it looked like. So, we've got these beautiful fanning pictures that she put together, you know, what's on water. And Kalina, another one of her summer students, went and spent the day with her out there as well. So, I really commend Vanessa for doing a great job. She's come in and she's worked, you can just see that I'm not crying, it's just the allergies. I'm not crying! So, she's worked downstairs a lot with Sue Adrian, and probably helped with some of the projects for the Grand Forks as well. So, we were really very lucky to have gotten her. As well, the archives. I sort of put this line in just because if you watch on the Facebook for the archives, you can see that Sue and Vanessa are putting together some wonderful pictures, asking if you know about them, different historical pictures of our people. So, you know, doing some research on honkies, come across this guy, Alex Lobsinger. He made it into the local postcard notice on his stick, "Extra special." So, you know, I, I think there's, we're doing some really great PR or presence between the art projects and the Boundary Museum. You're seeing a lot more of us on the website, on Facebook, on Instagram. We're really trying to become a lot more noticeable. I think it's helped with people coming up to the museum, so I think we're having a positive effect on that matter, right? Collection management, I'm going to turn this over to our lovely Bronwyn Burt because she is going to take over collection management.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So, my name is Bronwyn, and I'm the collections management coordinator at the museum. I just started three and a half months ago, so I'm pretty new to town. So far in the short time that I've been at the museum, we've been working on improving our collections management, working on updating our collections management policies and procedures, making things a little bit more streamlined in how we're managing acquisitions. We recently applied for some grant funding through the V.C. Rural Dividend Fund. We're, want to hire a consultant to help us with the collections management business institute plan, just to give us some recommendations for what we can do to help enhance the visitor experience with our exhibits and to work on protecting and preserving the culture and history of the area. Over the next few years, lots of projects that are being planned want to work on redesigning our exhibit spaces upstairs, introducing a temporary exhibit so every, you know, two to three times a year, one of our exhibits will change, help to attract more people up to the museum, and hopefully people who, locals in Grand Forks will continually keep coming to visit us. Is that it?
Yeah, so we're going to have, like she says, an exhibit that's going to change every three months. We're pretty excited about that because it hasn't really changed for the last three years, so we'll have some change. Bread. Bread is one of our most successful programs that is running up at the museum, and, I'm going to just say that one. So, these are real pictures, real to life pictures. I mean, they're great ad mats, aren't they? The bread coming out of the oven, what the bread looks like with the homemade butter that is made. Joey Titangell comes up, and he, in 10 minutes, can make you butter from cream. You have to come up and see him. I'm going to tell you how he does it. So, as a lot of you know, we, Sue, Sherewares, sorry, Sherewares was a big part of getting that pole oversigned, the Duke of Orks, on the highway, and there was an unveiling, and we had all these wonderful people there for the unveiling, and it was a really special moment. So, we're very proud of all of that work and what the result was. So, these are our summer students. They're amazing, they're dynamic, they're creative, they're energetic, and they know Internet and all that, so we are really very happy to have them up there. We're still open for the summer hours until September the 1st, so come up, meet them, enjoy what they have to tell you about the tours. Our Eric is from Castle Guard, but he does know a lot of stuff about the Sinoics and the Russians, and quite a bit of history from being from a Castle Guard person, there's that same history, so, and Kalina and Vanessa. And so, once again, we are reviewing our contract between the corporation of the city of Grand Forks and the Boundary Museum Society for January 1st to December 31st, 2019. We request that you renew our 2019 fee-for-service agreement in the amount of $80,000. Included with the quarterly report is a request to have a clause included in the fee-for-service contract of a 2% increase annually to cover the cost of living for, living for the wages. In condition, in conclusion, sorry, keep the glasses off. The Boundary Museum Society is seeking a recommendation from the city council at the committee of whole meeting to receive this quarterly report for the period of, for August to September under the terms of the 2018 fee-for-service agreement. And I do want to note that 2% increase. We felt that that would be a fair thing to ask for because the last time we had to come back and ask for $10,000 increase to our fee-for-service, and we didn't want to have to do that ever again. So, there you go. Any questions?
Councilor Butler.
Yeah, I think you guys have pretty stepped up your game, and I like what you're doing up there. I think it's great. I'm just looking at your financial statement that you provided, and I realize it's only for seven months, but you've got the city of Grand Forks operating funding at $30,000. Shouldn't that be $40,000 if you're considering it for half a year? Because it was actually $80,000.
I'm sorry, I have to find that.
While you're doing that, just one more question. Did you guys ever collaborate with all the other attractions in the Boundary to establish like a passport so that people can buy a used membership that will allow them free entrance into all of these different attractions, like the Kettle River Museum, perhaps the Art Gallery, the Boundary Museum, and whatever other attractions that we have? And then they can just go around and have access to all of these attractions within the region for an entire year for the buy of membership? I really think that tourism, through recreation and history is going to be our future, and I think it would be great to see more attractions and more opportunities grow that way. And so, this would just be the beginning of being able to get that better.
back and ask for a $10,000 increase to our fee-for-service and we didn't want to have to do that ever again, so. Any questions?
Yes. Oh, right. Picture. Yeah, I think you guys have pretty stepped up your game and I like what you're doing up there. I think it's great. I'm just looking at your financial statement that you provided and I realize it's only for seven months, but you've got the City of Grand Forks operating funding at $30,000, should not be $40,000 if you're considering it for half a year, because it was actually $80.
Um, I'm sorry, I have to find that.
While you're doing that, just one more question. Did you guys ever collaborate with all the other attractions in the Boundary to establish like a passport so that people can buy a used membership that will allow them free entrance into all of these different attractions, like the Kettle River Museum, perhaps the Art Gallery, the Boundary Museum, and whatever other attractions that we have? And then they can just go around and have access to all of these attractions within the region for an entire year for the buy of membership? I really think that tourism, through recreation and history is going to be our future and I think it would be great to see more attractions and more opportunities grow that way. And so this would just be the beginning of being able to get that better.
I agree. We've only managed to talk to a couple people, so it's a matter of getting the time and the organization, the meeting time to meet with everybody. It's still in process. I'm sure you've heard that before from other people, but it's a work in process. Just trying to connect to all the other museums and it is, it's a great idea. We have looked at our membership and what we offer and what we're putting together. We found a priority would be to put together what our own membership is getting for their fee, for what they get, such as, you know, they get to come into the museum and all of that. So we're trying to put that in place first, but we have talked to a couple people. So work in process. Yes, thank you.
I can speak to the funding, Mr. Mayor. The funding with the Boundary Museum is structured so there's different deposits throughout the year, so you wouldn't see the $80,000 right now at this point.
So the first seven months, it's only reflecting $30,000?
Well, yeah, so there was a deposit in May of $30,000 and there's another one in August and another one in close to September.
Oh, thank you. That's correct. Okay. That's great. I could better answer that, thank you.
All right. You agree?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I just really want to commend you too for the awesome job that you're doing up there. And one of the things that you have picked up on that I think is really important is you haven't been charging admissions, I don't think. And now I see on your budget here that you've got over $1,000 even though you said you remember you haven't had nearly as many people come to the museum because of the flooding and stuff. So I just really see that as a positive sign. So thank you for that and you're doing great.
Thank you. Now with that admission, it has become so successful and we're so happy with how that is going. There's no question where people come in anymore. It's just done. They walk out, they go, okay, you know, it's established. So it took a bit, but, and it's actually higher than that, probably well over $2,000 now for admission, just because that didn't show up in this report, right? So yeah, it's just, change is always hard, but sometimes good, you know? Sometimes it can be a good thing.
Do we have any other questions? Hearing none, thank you for the report.
Thank you very much, guys.
All those in favor of receipt? Anyone opposed or carried and follow-up with our recommendations that the fee-for-service request be forwarded to the 2019 budget process? Mr. Thompson? All those in favor? Anyone opposed or carried? All right. Out of five regional topics, we don't have our area director here today, so obviously there's no discussions. Moving on to 6A presentations from staff, subject matter, temporary use and development permit application, 6379 Wolf Street, proposed tiny homes on wheels from our development engineering recommendations submitted. The whole recommends to council at the August 20th, 2018 regular meeting to direct staff to proceed with the statutory requirements for public notice respecting a temporary use permit application for a tiny house on wheels. PUP 1802 proposed for 6379 Wolf Street, Audi Plan K87507, DL 382, PID 027648273. And direct staff to prepare a draft temporary use permit that considers adequate flood management servicing building cord and bonding requirements. And C, waive the $750 temporary use application fee as part of the city's recovery program to help flood victims in the city. Over, please. Councilor Ross?
Do you have anything to add? No, just questions.
Councilor Thompson?
This temporary use permit is for three years and subject to renewal. Is that my assumption correct?
Yeah, that's in the legislation. Temporary use permits usually normally for three years with potential for extension for another three years.
Councilor Thompson?
So the maximum is for six years? Is that correct?
Councilor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, just a question through to you, Dolores. For flood management, I believe that we're looking at needing foundations to be constructed high enough to accommodate palpable space above the designated flood level. And I'm understanding that this wouldn't, for those number of years, whichever, however long the temporary use permit applies. And I just wonder, how many feet would Jennifer need to raise this in order to meet those new building requirements if we allow this to go through? I'm just wondering what kind of risk she would be at for flooding in the future?
Am I allowed to speak?
I'm asking a question of our staff, thank you.
I can answer it.
I'm asking a question of the staff, thank you.
The purpose, we considered this before last year, was allowing tiny homes on wheels in floodplain areas. And the purpose for that was that we didn't want, because, you know, we enabled detached secondary units everywhere else in town pretty much, and we wanted to enable that also in areas of floodplain. But the concern, of course, is that they're going to be subject to flooding. So it was something that we had already considered, was allowing tiny homes on wheels in the floodplain areas. We didn't implement it with the last changes because we thought we needed a bit more time to work through it, but then the flood brought this to the forefront. So we, the consideration is going to be for, you know, basically the home will have to be constructed so that it can be quickly moved. And that's something we're working through with the building inspector, we're working through that with our electrical department and ensuring that in case of floods, it can be removed very quickly. And yeah, so we're working through the details of it. This is a very challenging first tiny home. It's a tiny home, it's a tiny home on wheels and it's a floodplain. So we're working through, this is a really good test case for us to work through all the details and the logistics of making this work and ensuring that it is safe and that, and the temporary use permit will be putting covenants on title so that to protect us and to protect the homeowner, we just, we want it to be safe and that's the primary focus of what we're doing.
Follow-up question, please?
Subsequently speaking, there's no discussion here of foundations because this is, as I understand it, a movable house on wheels.
Follow-up questions, please? So the question, follow-up question was, the question that I had asked is how many feet would it need to be raised if it were to be raised to the new flood level construction? Do you know the answer to that question or?
Not at the moment. That's what we're working with our two grants and what we'll be coming up with is our flood construction levels at that point. And so that also gives the opportunity for the time to wait until we have those proper levels in place because at this point, we don't have that information. We know that it's, in some places, it's likely to be higher than the floods, you know, based on the information that we got from the flooding and the two grants that we're working on with our floodplain modeling. We will be coming up with new flood construction levels and so this actually would give the time for us to come up with that proper level. So by the time Jennifer, whether she decides to put it on a permanent foundation or what the situation is by that time, or bring in fill material or whatever it is, at that time, then she'll know what that actual flood construction level is.
Thank you.
But understanding this closely, this resolution here has nothing to do with foundations at this point in time. We're dealing with tiny homes on wheels, so there's no realistic conversation on it. Exactly. Councilor Bubber, you had something to comment on?
Yeah, some of it's been answered, but it took a lot of words to answer it.
I thought she did a great job.
Yeah, she did. Awesome. I'm speaking now, so.
No, you interrupted me, so.
And then stopped immediately. I don't know what the hell the problem is. Anyways, it's on wheels. If you read the background info, it even talks about a quick disconnect. So, well, I even asked what level and I thought you knew, like everybody else knows, that the flood level hasn't been set yet. So that's a question that can't be answered right now, so I'm not sure why anybody would ask it, but whatever.
Councilor Hammitt and Councilor Bubber?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea and I think you guys, I think Grand Forks can write the book if you create some kind of plug-and-play utilities. People can just plug in and disconnect it.
Every.
Not just for the electric, whatever. That'd be awesome.
Councilor Bubber?
Yeah, I think this is a good solution for Jennifer with the property that she's at, not being sure yet whether this property is going to receive a buyout. And she's in the position that a lot of people are in, living in fifth wheels, not knowing what to do once the weather starts getting colder. So I think this is a great approach that even if it's just temporary, she can disconnect and move. I mean, the flood doesn't come upon you in a day, she'll see it coming, she'll know in at least a couple of weeks in advance, it's no past high, weather's getting warmer. And I think most of us, with common sense, would move out a lot sooner than the last minute if need be. But I think the concern that some people might have is that if for some reason, common sense didn't prevail, that then there would be another request for DFA funding or the city would somehow be held liable for allowing her to have a tiny house in that area. But I think that the covenants that are put on title will take care of any of those risks, so there wouldn't be a risk of any future claims on that property. I just want to clarify that with Dee.
Councilor Tripp?
I'm sorry, I just had a question for Dee. Just that the covenants would cover that there wouldn't be any liability.
Yeah, it seems very similar to what we have. These is doing 2019 covenants for flood, all buildings in floodplain.
Just so councilors are aware, this will be discussed this evening at the regular meeting as the resolution reads. Councilor Tripp?
Yeah, thank you. This is a time for us to discuss back and forth issues. And I guess I absolutely am in favor of tiny homes on wheels on properties where there is not a risk for damage to those vehicles, basically, or tiny homes. And I'm aware and understand that this property is subject to flooding every year. So there's probably going to be a very strong potential that this is going to be, need to be moved every year. And I just wonder if the proponent is prepared for that? If the proponent would know someone who would be able to come and get that vehicle at a moment's notice and also have a place to put it on higher ground?
Do I answer that question?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to come up there?
No.
Yeah, okay. So I'm Jennifer Houghton and this is my proposal that you're talking about. So yes, I am prepared for those eventualities. The idea is, the reason I'm building this is so that I can leave when the floodwaters are coming. It's going to be built in a way that it can quickly be disconnected and set up somewhere else. I've had numerous friends with acreages offer me a place to stay temporarily during the flood period. That is the reason I'm building the house on wheels, so that I can leave during the flood period. Raising my house is not a financially viable option for me. Plus, there's been every indication that, you know, the meetings that have happened so far after the river study that because my house is, my property is at high risk of flooding, that I am going to get a buyout. You know, it's not 100% certain right now. So if I do get that buyout, then I have a home that I can wheel away and build somewhere else. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Great interim solution.
Gentleman in the back?
And I would just point out, along with Counselor Butler was saying.
Vacation, please.
Les Johnson.
Order of record.
GFTV. Jennifer was the first person this year who was campaigning to get people to be aware that the flood was coming. She was one of the first people, if not the first person, to talk about sandbagging. And she's hyper-aware this. And as far as I know, she has no more DFA use available to her, maybe one more, I'm not sure, but yeah, if anybody would be aware, she'd be aware.
Gentleman in the front.
Mayor Conrad, Gary Jarvis, I actually live close to Jennifer, half a mile south of her. A couple of questions in my mind. I think what she's doing may solve her initial problem, for sure. More power to her and I admire that. One question is, the sewer facilities in Johnson Flats, everybody's on second systems, okay? Those all attend the flood. Under the temporary use permit, does it deal with that issue? Second question is, is that at the end of six years, three and three more, if the property has not filled up the flood standards, then what happens? Six years and one day, what happens? I'd like to know that now and I think it's a reasonable question. Thank you.
Good for you. We, there'll be a lot, there's, we don't know what's going to happen once the floodplain studies are done. We don't know what that's going to look like at this point. And once those are completed, this is going to be, this is going to be an ongoing process because it's always going to be floodplain. And we will be dealing with this issue forever, realistically. So once these studies are done and we have the data that we need to make informed decisions, then the council of the day will be making those decisions as we move forward. And temporary use permits can be canceled and a new temporary use permit could potentially be issued, but I'm hoping that in three to six years that we've, you know, we'll come a long way and some of these, we'll have some solutions for some of these things.
So what you're telling me then is there really isn't a six-year-plus-one plan? Is that correct?
Not at the moment because we don't have the information.
So this is really an open permit then, so you're telling me?
We don't have the information at this time until our studies.
Well, you've prepared a wish of a permit at this time, but you're not prepared to close it off? I mean, there's so many things in Grand Forks that gets started and nothing gets finished.
Unfortunately, right now, as our manager of engineering stated, this is a bit premature. It's a great question, but it's premature because we don't have the answers yet from the engineers, from our flood experts.
And should we be issuing a permit at this point?
Well, at least the city's given the opportunity to find interim solutions, which tiny homes on wheels is one interim solution. Like I said, this is a whole new, whole new realm for Grand Forks and even for the province of B.C., a flood of this magnitude is not something we've even ever encountered. So we cannot have the answers at this point in time at the tip of our fingertips. I mean, realistically speaking, we have to use common sense here and go along. It's, in a way of saying, it's baby steps.
That's fine, just as I say, too many things in Grand Forks get started and nothing gets finished because councils change, things happen, and there's no, there's no stop date. So I'm just concerned that six years and one day from now, or the day after the permit's issued, we haven't resolved the problem.
That's a possibility, but it's very hypothetical at this point, making a statement like that because there's no surety of that.
Okay, I just want to make myself clear.
Appreciate that, thank you. Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Hammitt and the gentleman in front row.
Thank you, worship, through you to Dee. The legislation, the act, only allows up to six years for temporary use permits, is that correct?
Yes, but you can issue a temporary use permit to be canceled at any time and then a new application can come forward if situation changes or something's different. Yeah, so I mean, it's intended to allow some flexibility for council in very special circumstances, which I would say that this is certainly a special circumstance, so that's what they're there for. They allow council a great deal of flexibility in setting whatever rules they want for it and because you can't vary use in, or zoning by law, you can't vary use. And so this is a way of somewhat varying a use, but giving council a lot of, temporary use permits give council the ability to put basically, pretty much, whatever they want in temporary use permit to ensure that it's, you know, what they expect it to be.
So if I can just weigh in on this one, if I understand this correctly, the second insurance policy where you can have a new start date and a new stop date, should the council of the day decide to do that? So for instance, if this temporary use is canceled and we start another one October the 10th, six years, so it all starts again. So that's where the flexibility is. Counselor Thompson, follow-up?
My thing to, what Jennifer is doing is very innovative and I admire her for doing that. I think it's going to be a really good learning curve for not only herself, but for others that may want to avail themselves of this kind of a solution. So I just want to be on record as I will be supporting this recommendation.
Counselor Hammitt?
Yeah, I would think that hopefully we will have resolution within a three-year period because if we.
period, because if we don't, I mean, the provincial government is not going to give us money unless we have a permanent solution. So, we need to make sure that we have a proper permanent solution in place to get the funding. Hopefully, we'll have that all. I'm frustrated that we have to wait of any length of time for this, so the sooner we get this done, the better. And soon as, soon as that resolution has been put into place and we've done the temporary or the permanent fix, chances are in three years there won't be a need for a renewal.
But again, having said that, it sets a great interim precedent, because even the province has never experienced something like this, so kudos to you.
We call a question. There's a gentleman here.
Gentleman in the front row still has his official name. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name's Gordy Schai, of Johnson Flats. As has been stated before, we're all on septic systems down there. My neighbor, myself, and one other person, as far as I realize, are probably the only three people down there that didn't have septic systems that were compromised being underwater in the flood. I just hope that with Jennifer's application, and I'm all for it, that this thing gets a 2018 compliant system that isn't going to be experienced like underwater when another major flood occurs. Just for the record, like I said, I see lots of stuff floating around Johnson Flats, and you know, it was kind of apprehensive to bump over in there, but you got to save the neighborhood, right?
I don't think Jennifer's septic was compromised.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, my septic was not compromised. I haven't had any problems with it, and it's, I'm not, I'm not moving any drains, I'm not changing anything, so essentially my septic is, if I lived in my current house and continued to use the current septic, it's exactly the same as living in the tiny house and using the septic, it's just that it's coming through a different pipe. And, you know, nothing with my septic is being changed in any manner whatsoever. There's still one person using a septic that wasn't compromised.
They didn't rebuttal to that. If I buy a 1950 house, tear it down, put a new house up, I can use the current septic system? See, it doesn't, it doesn't apply. Again, if we're going to do any changes, kindly bring the thing up to current standards for the environment, for health and welfare of the community, and for, you know, just general responsibility.
Need to comment on that briefly, but that comes under the subject of interior health, because they deal with the septic systems.
We've, I've talked, approached interior health twice, to absolutely no avail, they're not interested at all. My next step would be the Minister of Health, I suppose. And, you know, do we want that kind of exposure down here?
Ministry of Health, wash their hands of it.
Well, I meant.
No, seriously, because what it is, they've turned it back to the installers of the septic systems. They're the, they're the people that do their own self-inspections. They've been certified to do it.
But interior health still has to inspect.
No, they don't.
They don't?
No, not anymore, no. Unfortunately, for years.
But it's down to their specifications.
But if you want to come down, I'll show you how mine's built, Barry's built, I'll show you how the rest of the neighborhood's built. And there's different elevations. But it doesn't make sense.
We can, councilor, need to focus on what's in here.
Anyway.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting subject.
Request.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I have similar concerns, and the one thing that I am concerned about, we've heard over and over again that nobody is going to be able to build in any of these floodplain areas unless they build up to the new floodplain standards. I don't know whether Jennifer's home was at the old floodplain standards. I'm probably pretty sure that it wasn't, because her place did flood quite badly, and those new buildings that were built to the new floodplain standards didn't seem to experience nearly the amount of catastrophic damage. So, I'm just, I'm worried that she's not going to get the, basically, the help that she needs to get her place up. We don't know what the future holds in terms of buyouts or anything else at this point. This is all subjective. So, I mean, we will even know more, hopefully, as of September 4th, where, what council is going to recommend to the province and what direction we're going to be going in. You know, we've, we've heard buyouts and then no buyouts, and now building up, having things built up to the floodplain standards and not. And this just, this concerns me for her, that if we are allowing her to just go back on to the level, like it's probably a slab, is it slab concrete or whatever they call We're going to just end up in the same can of worms that we've ended up all along, and she's going to end up, you know, dragging that thing out, putting it back, dragging it out, putting it back. And I would, I would like to see her get the help that she needs to get that piece of property at a place where it's buildable, where, you know, where whatever she puts in there isn't going to be sustaining damage. Those are just my comments. I have those concerns.
We're deviating way off subject.
I don't think we are.
Yes, we are, gentlemen, just to read the recommendation. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carrie.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll bring that item in tonight as a late item for discussion because it wasn't on the official agenda, or ensure many of the whores sent it forward to the evening meeting.
Yeah, we just did. So we'll have round two this evening. All right, moving on to 6B, monthly highlight reports from department managers. Recommendation is committee and the whole receives the monthly highlight reports from department managers. Over please, Counselor Ross. All those in favor? Vote discussions.
I'm sure there is, I just haven't thought to this page. Hang on.
Yeah, in the interim, this is regarding a situation that's ongoing currently. Last week, we found an RV, quite dilapidated, parked in, tucked in, left behind some commercial buildings on Market Avenue. Fellow that was in it was a mill drive dealer, and there was a constant flow of bicycle couriers in and out. We stood around and watched for about an hour. I talked to him, he was drunk. They had access to one of the buildings, because the fellow that was contracting had hired some of these guys, and they were coming in and out of one of these commercial buildings. We called the police, and this came later, I suppose, they looked him over there. We went back down the next day, hoping for his camper, apparently at Seapark, and it's parked in Park Lot, Seapark. It had a temporary permit on after the 16th, 17th of August only. I was down there last night, it's still down there. I've talked to Joan Hart, and it's quite concerning for her because it's attracting all kinds of elements, the people that are coming and going, looking for him to get their supply from, so it's creating problems. She's, she doesn't, the police have been down there two or three times today. They've given a next number of time, you know, hours or whatever to move out, but the point is, he's got an uninsured vehicle in Seapark that he's got camped in there, and it's not even supposed to be in there after 11 o'clock, but in the park north. I know Bud's aware of it, and I'm just thinking, there has to be a simpler way of probably able to protect that camper from people.
To our officer.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm very aware of that vehicle. I was in Abbot'sford for the weekend, however, I dealt with him on Friday morning before I left for Abbot'sford. He had the temporary use permit on, it was valid until midnight of Friday night. On Saturday morning, I called the RSCMB from Abbot'sford and had them attend again, and I suggested to them that they have it towed. They went down and they threatened to have it towed and crushed, however, they gave him, because the ICBC office was closed, they gave him until noon Monday to get a permit to get it out of there. I spoke with him again yesterday afternoon when I got back from Abbot'sford, and I reiterated that to him, "At noon, I'll be checking, if it's not gone, I will be having it towed, probably to the city."
That's a question. Counselor Butler, you have it.
Also, for the bylaw officer, in his report, he says that a demand letter delivered from a lawyer to a property owner regarding a bylaw infraction. I was wondering if you could elaborate on what that is?
The demand letter was sent to a property owner that had people living in a garage, and had, he had been warned on numerous occasions about the use of that garage. We've been dealing with that particular property off and on since last summer, and the people are no longer living there. In fact, by nine o'clock this morning, I had been moving out of their campsite in Seapark.
Thank you. Counselor Ross.
Go on, thank you. Yeah, I just want to point out, building inspection, there's some really good numbers there. It's about 75% higher this year so far than it was this year, to year, last year to year end, and already just this year to date, we're 75% higher, so that's pretty significant. Is that all residential or a combination of residential and industrial or commercial? But it is pretty impressive. I mean, from what I'm hearing from people coming to town, Grand Forks is still a very much sought-after address, which is great. It's a beautiful place. I know it's smokier here than anywhere between here and Kelowna.
I guess we could get that follow-up information from our building inspector.
I think it's mostly residential, so I don't think we've had any major commercial investment projects. Excellent, thank you.
Other than the one that's already coming. All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carrie. All right, moving on to item 8A, under proposed bylaws for discussion, bylaw 2045-81-2018 to 2022, the financial plan amendment from our chief financial officer. The recommendation is that the committee and the whole receives for introduction and discussion the 2018 to 2022 financial plan amendment bylaw, number 2045-81, and refers the first three readings of the bylaw to the September 4th, 2018, regular meeting. Over please, Counselor Thompson. Discussion, Counselor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I through you to the CFO. I just want to thank her for answering the questions via email that were sent out. There's a lot of information included here for changes. The one question that I have, though, is looking through our capital plan for the year, there's something like 68 projects on the books right now, and considering that we've just had a major flood, I'm wondering if there's some of those projects maybe that aren't quite as necessary to be completed within the next five years? And have we looked at maybe dropping some of those projects off the books that aren't extremely urgent in order to reduce our capital budget and therefore not have to ask for an increase?
Yes, absolutely. Well, we're going to have to redo the entire capital plan to take into account the flooding this year, so that's what's existing. There will be a number of those, I do believe, that probably won't get done this year, for this year, but yeah, we will be readjusting the entire capital plan.
So is that not something that can be done at this time? I mean, I looked through and saw maybe three projects that, you know, just aren't extremely necessary, and I know they're not going to get done this year, so why not drop those off the books and then not have to ask for an increase?
Chief Financial Officer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the capital projects, it's a process that takes us several months to go through. It's not something we just have time right now to complete a review of what we have. However, I would anticipate next year's, the amount of projects are going to be a ton less than what we have right now. We need all the departments in on this. This goes from public works to engineering, there's somebody from corporate involved. Getting everybody, all the managers in right now is a challenge. Two or three of them are currently working, helping out with the recovery team. It's a, it's a challenge just having everybody in one room to make those decisions of what needs to be cut and what doesn't at this stage. Some of them are started, they will just take longer to complete, so that it will be probably rolled over into the next couple of years.
Counselor Thompson, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Your Worship. You've just said, Daniel, what I was going to say is that these, these capital projects that some think maybe aren't necessary will be rolled over into the next budget year if that's what the management team deems. So, it's already been costed out, it's not going to have an impact on taxes, so I don't have any issue with leaving that the way it is.
Counselor Ross.
Hi, thank you. I just want to go down to the bit about additional funding of the 803,500, which is required from reserves. I just want to look at the dike reconstruction, and I don't understand, excuse me for my ignorance there, but I thought that would have come out of federal provincial funding or grant funding that we're applying for. Are we just borrowing that money from reserves and then going to pay it back to reserves just because we need it as quickly as possible? It just doesn't seem right that we're taking money out of reserves for dike reconstructions. So if you can just clarify.
Mr. Gates, you going to weigh in on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The dike, the current dike is under our disaster financial assistance, so within that, we receive 80% funding and have to provide the 20% funding.
So about 20% is a 682.
That's correct.
Okay, come on, okay. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Travis.
Before you sit down.
The reconstruction, is that going to happen regardless of whether or not there's a new dike to be built?
That's right. As part of our responsibility as the local authority under the dike set, the current damage that was done to the dikes, we must repair it, and we are looking to that prior to next freshet, so we don't have any more issues than what otherwise.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad, and I'm going to switch over to, I think, to Laura's here, and in response to the email questions that I had sent out. The wastewater treatment plant, I had asked the question about it costing an additional $454,000, and the memo back says that you would speak to that, so I'm just looking forward to your comments.
Yeah, so this is a really large project, obviously, and we're retrofitting old to new, and normally when that happens, you have increased costs and larger contingencies with that. So, the original plan, we had, we have an existing carrier pipe, and a carrier pipe is a large pipe that carries smaller pipes through it. We have an existing carrier pipe that goes from the wastewater treatment, the lagoons to wastewater treatment plant, and the original plan was to use that pipe for deslедing. And when we dug the pipe up, we discovered that it was full slide.
Wow.
So, we couldn't use that. So, that was another $133,000, because we had to do directional drilling under the railroad tracks at a different location, and that was a very, very long process with Grand Forks Railway, with Interfor and Rocksel, and it took a lot of negotiating to get that to go through. So that was $133,000 for that. Apparently, slide was very abundant back then, and we used it. The other is, and this is something that we knew about that was a potential when we first applied for the grant funding for this project, and that was a harmonization of federal and provincial legislation around wastewater. And we knew that there could be some changes coming, and that those changes could impact us in our permit. So in order to meet our permit, it looks like the harmonization is going to bring about another requirement, which is ammonia removal, which is going to be another $140,000. So we're planning for that, and that's included in this. And there were a couple of other things. We had some difficulty with programming old, our old material with new products, and getting the, getting up to talk to each other, because we got old and new, again, we're retrofitting. So we ended up with some increased costs with our PLCs programming, program logical, I don't understand it all, but there were some increases there. And then another is that public works had a look at the heating system for one of the buildings, and, you know, they did some, a business case, they looked at the costs for heating, and they looked long-term, and they figured out that if we did a different type of heating system, which I believe is in-floor heating, that over the long-term, it would save us a lot more money, and so that will give us, is something we have to be a bit more upfront, but in the long-term, it will be more energy efficient. There was about, and then there was another that they discovered, that actually our wastewater treatment crew made a suggestion of something that actually apparently is quite a good suggestion of some best practices, that it could be, it's optional, but apparently it's, I don't, again, they don't quite understand, we have to get into the wastewater treatment side, I have to talk about that, but the engineers said it was a very good idea, and it was something that we probably should do, it's about $10,000 increase. And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say.
Thank you for all those details. Thank you for all those detailed explanations. And by the way, thank you, Mr. Gates, for that detailed explanation you discussed.
Thank you.
You have another follow-up?
Yes, just in addition to DeeDee's list there.
Go ahead.
So there, there was the electrical service connection that needs to be upgraded and the, uh, deslедging in the lagoons. So, uh, we, we ended up creating more room in cell two and partly in order to accommodate additional volume during flooding. Of course, we're anticipating the amount of flooding this year, but the idea being that we would then be able to, to accommodate additional days, uh, for whatever reason, um, keeping the, the wastewater in the cells instead of discharging.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up comment? So it sounds like as you've been moving along in the project and, um, coming up against, uh, different things and ways of, of doing things, you're, um, running into best practices and deciding, making decisions that are influencing the, the overall, uh, amount of the program. And, um, and I, I think that's really good. I mean, sometimes this happens when you get into the nitty-gritty details of things and you find out you just need to put some extra costs in there. So thank you for your explanations.
And just want to point out that we did budget a hundred thousand dollars for a potential permit increase for our liability assessments and potentials for, um, this for discharge. And so that's now, we've realized that we can, uh, with the existing equipment that we have with the contractor, that we'll be able to meet our permit requirement. So we reduced that to a hundred thousand dollars. And so that four hundred thousand dollars there can now go towards the, uh, the other requirement.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
That's listed as the NWR discharge requirements, so that's that four hundred thousand dollars in savings.
Thank you.
To answer my question.
All right. Your Chief Financial Officer.
Since I did the report to council, um, it turns out that, um, our insurance company was originally going to pay all the mediation invoices on our behalf and rather than us paying them and reimbursing them. But now, uh, we, they've asked us to pay them just to expedite, uh, the payment process to the contractor. Um, so we need to, rather than have those completely off our books, as they would have been if they were paid directly by the insurance company, we'll have to, um, report that expense and report the revenue. So there'll be no net, net, um, income effect. But, um, I will have to increase the, or change the financial plan. And that amount at this point is, um, for at least six hundred thousand dollars. So I'll have to increase the expense and, and, uh, increase the revenues as well to offset when I come back with this to the next, uh, on the board.
Beverly Jarvis, Mayor Conrad, uh, one, actually two quick questions. It looks like in the, in the current year's budget, there's about three and a half million dollars for dike repairs. Is that as existing dikes? Is that correct? Nothing more?
Uh, the dike repair, uh, so the, the three and a half is for the recovery plan through the disaster financial assistance. Of that, about three million is for repairs to the current dikes.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. No additional dikes, just the current dikes is gonna be three point four, roughly?
Well, the, so that, that three point four figure includes other things like the trail behind Interfor and, uh, some of the throat service repairs that we've been doing.
Oh.
So, so it's the entire recovery plan, but it's just the current dikes, yes?
Okay, great. Second question briefly. We have a sixty-five thousand dollar credit underwater in sewer revenues, flood billing adjustments. Can I ask where that comes from or what it's for? Is it just a reduction in budget or is it beef?
Our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that's, that's a reduction in revenue that is anticipated as a result of waiving the billing uh, to the homes that were affected by flooding.
Sixty-five thousand dollars?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, when would I see that on my bill?
Um, I can't, I, I would have to investigate your, your actual situation. But, uh, we did, um, just stop billing for one billing cycle minimum, um, to the homes that we were aware of that were affected. So whatever data we had, um, I think it was all the, uh, red and, well, probably orange blood code.
Red and yellow.
Homes. Red and yellow. Yeah, sorry. But, uh, if you feel that you should have had a, um, an adjustment, I suggest you contact our revenue clerk and she can look into it.
Because I didn't know anything about it until I saw it on here. It was not love.
Yeah.
Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, council passed, uh, a motion to waive, uh, utility late fees payments. Um, um, there's quite a few things rolled into that. But I think it was recommended that people notify City Hall if they were getting bills that they shouldn't have because the community that generates the invoices wouldn't necessarily be looking directly at your address or wouldn't know how impacted you were. But it was passed, uh, back in June, I believe. Just, just at a public meeting.
I was likely to come, but I, I wasn't aware of it until I just looked at this. So I should contact the, the building clerk.
Were you red or yellow?
Yellow.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. Thank you. Eighteen bylaw, twenty fifty, proposed council members' renumeration and expenses from our corporate officer and chief financial officer. The recommendation is that committee of the whole recommends to council to consider the appointment of a committee to advise staff of the annual remuneration amounts for the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two to be included in the council remuneration and expense bylaw number twenty fifty. Over please. Counselor Ross. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. And a follow-up to that is the recommendation that committee of the whole recommends to council to give the first three readings of the proposed bylaw, twenty fifty, council remuneration expenses bylaw, twenty fifty, two thousand eighteen, at the September fourth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting. Over, Counselor Ross. All those in favor?
Just a question.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Um, can this bylaw be referred to the committee of the whole meeting, uh, on that date? So that we could discuss it and have a look at it? Oh, we're having a, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so council has a policy in place currently that, uh, that basically dictates that council should, uh, create a committee, um, to discuss the potential remuneration increases for council. Uh, the, the problem is, most other organizations in the area started that process in May. And we all know how, how May went. We're, we're kind of a little behind this now. So, um, looking at a couple of other policies, uh, that we came up with that, uh, while Ms. Rhodes was working on, uh, getting this bylaw, putting this bylaw together. Um, so basically, the idea would be to rescind, uh, two policies, I think it is. Uh, rescind two policies and create a bylaw instead that takes care of this. Um, again, we're, we're running a little behind for creating a committee. This is like way too late at this point to, to do this. Uh, council in the past has, uh, elected not to necessarily, um, create this committee as well. Um, so anyways, it's, I'm asking count, uh, the committee of the whole at this point to consider creating this committee or not and instruct us to go ahead or not with this bylaw.
Because prior to this, it was the previous council that always made the decisions on future council, correct?
Correct.
Counselor Triv.
Thanks for that explanation, Daniel. I was thinking the same thing. Um, how's the committee gonna get together and get something back to council in two weeks? And who, who would make up the committee? Is that supposed to be a member of council and a member of staff?
Member of the public.
Member of the public? Okay, so there you go. So we can just try and find somebody. So, um, are, would your recommendation be then, um, you know, just to not establish this committee and to go to Plan B, which is to change the bylaw?
All those, that is cool.
Yeah, at, at this point, this would be most likely the preferable solution to not have the, the committee make this choice. And rather, if the committee of the whole has a discussion around some of the financial impacts, I, I know there was a memo from, or RFD from, uh, Ms. Rhodes a couple of weeks ago regarding, uh, some of the type of taxation changes for council.
Counselor Triv.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, um, and, and looking at this information here, too. Um, I mean, I think we can see some things. Um, I don't know what appetite council has to discuss it, but my personal, personal feeling over, on what we saw there was that, A, the mayor's, um, salary is quite a bit lower than, um, what we see in other communities. And councilor's salaries are significantly higher. So, um, usually councils aren't very, uh, amenable to reducing their, um, what they're paid. And, uh, this council has been and will be working extremely hard over the next four years. But, um, certainly there are some considerations there. I don't know if the rest of council has any comments.
Counselor Ross.
Okay, so, um, I didn't think it was gonna be really that much of heavy lifting for us to form a, a committee, including somebody, a member from the public, and get this done in an hour. Um, I would have suggested that be police counselor, um, a counselor and mayor salaries. And when we talk about remuneration, that's the entire package. It's not just salary, correct? It's the entire package.
And expenses as well?
That's our, that's not expenses. That doesn't include spes. This is remuneration, including our, our, our salary and benefits. That's what the package, that's what that number is. And not all, um, municipalities have that, um, for counselors. I don't, I would never say to decrease it because we're trying to encourage younger people, um, who are semi-employed or self-employed to take on the role of council and by reducing our salary. We all know this is a pretty much full-time job. It can't be for many of us. Um, that is not, um, I don't, I don't think it makes it at all attractive. Um, for me, I'm self-employed and this is, um, really has heightened my personal ability to, um, earn a living wage. So I would have recommended a freeze with, uh, cost of living increase only, um, for the next council. And I'm sure anybody in the public would agree with that. And we would come to that conclusion and fill those blanks in twenty minutes and have it back to you within the end of this week. I bet you I could have a meeting by Wednesday and have this decided and have those blanks filled and have it back to, to, to City Hall in chalk of September fourth. I don't understand why this is such heavy lifting. No, we're not.
On the second recommendation, we're on the second recommendation right now. Go ahead.
Um, I think the objective here is that, um, um, one-third of council stipend is non-taxable. And that is going to change come January the first, which means that one hundred percent of our stipend will be taxable and very likely will result in a lesser amount of being taken home. And, um, for, for myself, uh, it's, it's not a huge issue. But for others, in particular the young people who you want to encourage to run, that means you're disincentive. So I think that, um, while I respect what you're saying and I hear what you're saying, I think we have to really think long and hard about the, um, people that we want to attract with their names forward to be, uh, come, uh, potentially, uh, a member of council.
Uh, gentlemen, back.
So, I'm standing here and I'm looking at Les Johnson, GFTB. I'm looking at the agenda and I can see the values you have right now. But for the people who aren't looking at the agenda, who might be through viewers right now on Facebook or later on on cable TV, and they won't have the agenda in front of them, you're talking about your salaries and how much you're paid. And they should know what that is. I mean, really, they don't know what you're paid. They don't know how low it is. They don't know that the lowest-paid union member of any job in this town makes more than all of you.
Absolutely.
You should, you should let them know, really. I mean, really, they should know what they're facing. They can't read that. That's a small little thing on the screen. Maybe somebody could just speak it, speak it out, like I could speak it out right now. The mayor makes eighteen grand. The city councillor makes thirteen, five, seven, eight. Like, just so people know. You put an awful lot of effort into what you do and time and everything else, and you get paid peanuts. That's what they're talking about here, to the people listening in.
Okay, that's it.
Everybody, help with, please, lay more money in. More money to this side of the room.
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with what the other councillors and Les have said that, uh, for myself, I've definitely had to reduce the amount of time that I work outside of council work because this is a full-time job right now. And I think the public expects that after the flood, that council, they, they wanna know, why isn't council doing more? They, they want us working full-time, yet we're not getting paid a full-time wage. And if you want to attract good people to this position that are gonna put up with the public feedback, which isn't always overly pleasant, um, to do that for thirteen to seventeen thousand dollars a year, I've asked a lot of people to run and they said, why would I? Why would I put up with that for not getting paid anything? I mean, it's really a labor of love to sit in this chair and make decisions for your community. Then you're not getting much love back and you're not getting much remuneration back. So if you want good people sitting in these chairs, if you want business people that know how to manage your finances and know how to make good decisions, you're gonna have to attract them and give them some sort of incentive to sit here.
Yeah, for people who pay attention to council, you know, they know how much I lean on you guys when I'm not happy and, and I have a lot of respect for you, even though there is times you may not seem that way. And just so that people get the idea that I'm trying to push for higher wages because I'm gonna run, there's no way I'll ever, ever run for council. So just get that out of your head.
Just, just a quick note on it, if I may state this as mayor.
Okay.
Originally, it started with the word stipend and you did not go in to be an elected official for the money. That was never the case. You did it because you wanted to do something for your community. So stand up and be counted. If you're going in for the money, it's gonna be a sad day. Counselor Hammond.
Well, there's a lot of people in this, there's a lot of people in this community that would like to step up and, and help their community, but aren't in a financial position to do so. So it does restrict. I mean, a lot of people here are close to pension or they've got secondary incomes. Um, you know, you definitely need to have some, I mean, I'm going through my RSPs to supplement my stipend here, um, just to be able to serve on this board. So it, it really does restrict, um, people. They have to look at their financial situation to see if they can even, it's possible.
Out of our forefathers do it for decades, have decades. So there wasn't, it wasn't even a question of money at that time. It was just for initiative and the wanting to help your community and help your constituents. I can honestly say I didn't do it for the money. Counselor Triv.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So just for clarification, then, that, uh, Grand Forks amount there for the annual remuneration for mayor and council, that does include our salary and benefits?
Uh, no, the amounts, but the amounts here are just the, include what was formerly the tax-free exemption, the one-third. So it's the full amount, including the one-third.
But not, but not the...
But not then.
Not then. But thank you, that's...
Yeah, on this, Counselor, you're...
Yeah, just a quick comment. From my understanding, I'm listening to people that have been around this job for a long time. There's also been a lot of downloading by the provincial government over the years to municipalities so that now councils are making a lot more decisions than they originally were when it used to just be, you know, potholes and pipes. Now we're making a lot, a lot more decisions than previous councils were burdened with.
Not so much decisions, I think more suggestions to the province because they still hold the upper hand. I'm gonna call the question on the second recommendation, which is being proposed for the September fourth regular meeting. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay, eight C, bylaw twenty fifty-two, nature park dedication from development and engineering. Recommendation, committee of the whole recommends to council to give first, second, and third readings of the nature park bylaw twenty fifty-two at the September fourth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting. Over please. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross. Discussion, Counselor Butler.
Sorry, I was trying to find something here in this proposal, and I know I read it the other day. It talks something about being able to decide what people do on their private property. So just a question to staff, was there any wording like that in here?
Counselor O'Neal, the mayor is not here, but Mr. Hayes might give a way in on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way that, and this was in reference to the trees, is that if we want to manage trees on our land, we do it via policy. But if we want to also have some sort of tree management on private land, that would have to be through bylaw.
Okay, so it's not something that's included in this bylaw?
No, this is strictly looking at a nature park dedication on lands that we own.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I wonder if we could get up there, the grassland nature park map. I guess my concern here is that, I mean, certainly can understand riparian areas and river areas where the river's running, but for the grassland area, the city doesn't own a lot of land, and there's a ton of grassland around us, and I certainly invite other people's comments and observations and input, because I'm not really understanding why this land in particular would need to be designated as a nature park, being that the city doesn't have a whole lot of land that it has to offer for potential development down the road.
The grasslands area is a sensitive ecosystem. It's quite rare for British Columbia. It does host a number of endangered species as habitat type. It's also not very easy to develop this area. This is fairly vertical. If you're familiar with it, it's quite a steep rise.
Pretty much right over here.
In behind the landfill, and then down to Alleys. So it's, it hits that sweet spot of being both sensitive ecosystem and from an infrastructure perspective, costly to develop.
And it's a good asparagus patch.
The very first one that we have is the one that's, the Johnson Flats, that's already, we've already designated that as one, my definitely. So is this duplicating that, or is it just, so now we're just tidying up the balance of the ones that we had originally put in place, or we just haven't had ribbon cuttings for them yet?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last bylaw was created strictly for Johnson Flats wetland as a nature park. So we're recommending to form a nature park bylaw instead of one specific for each region, and rather repeal the other one, but include the schedule into this one for the Johnson Flats, all the parks. And if we have more parks in the future, we can simply add Schedule E, Schedule Fs, and so on, to simply use one bylaw versus having 10 different ones that deal with the same topic.
Right, okay.
Okay, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. Moving on to 8D, Bylaw 2053, Cannabis Delegation from Development Engineering. Recommendation is, the committee of the whole recommends to council to give the first three readings to Cannabis Delegation Bylaw Number 2053 at the September 4th, 2018 regular meeting. Counselor Tripp. Discussion, Counselor Butler, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I read through this quite carefully, and I actually went and checked online to see the Bill 30, the Cannabis Control and Licensing Act. And what I read in there was that there absolutely is a provision for local governments to delegate authority to make recommendations about, you know, the issue of cannabis retail licenses. But I, I didn't get the sense from that act that the intent of the act is to actually have a delegate to do that. I got the sense that the intent of the act is to actually have local government councils engage in the licensing. And it says that the general manager, which is the provincial appointee responsible for administering the act, must not issue a prescribed class of license, or make a prescribed type of amendment to a prescribed class of license. Yeah, that's obviously the least. Unless the local government or indigenous nation for the areas in which the establishment is proposed to be located, or is located, gives the general manager a recommendation that the license be issued or amended. So I think the views of the local government on the community, if the application is approved, I know that's got to be provided in writing to the LCRB. And I'm just wondering how that's going to happen if license approvals are actually designated by staff. And to me, to circumvent the important, you know, link in this approval process, the link is that the public wants, needs to be consulted according to their, according to the legislation, and the municipal government is expected to wrestle with this, to engage with this, and to provide comments back to the LCRB. I think it's putting a heavy burden on a staff person to do this, and I don't think that council really has the right to abdicate their responsibility, which I really feel that the legislation says is the responsibility of the councils to be wrestling with these things, and to be, and to be getting the comments, and to be going back with the recommendations to the LCRB. So I won't be supporting this.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I concur with Counselor Tripp. At this time, when we're transitioning over to a legal process, I think it's important that we have transparency and communication from the public. And we saw what happened when a cannabis dispensary opened in town prior to the last election, and the public wasn't aware of it. There were people that were quite upset. And we've also heard from the flood situation, that communication is key. And having the public buy-in on where these dispensaries are located and allowing public to have feedback is the intent of this act and why it's put in place. And I absolutely agree that it should be elected officials representing the public that make that decision, and to circumvent the public process and to block the public out of that process, I don't think is a good idea.
Counselor Ross, Hammond, and then Counselor Groh.
From my memory, we've done incredible due diligence in asking the public's input as we put together our bylaws around where these dispensaries are going to be located, setbacks, and whether or not they're going to be on the main street, and the distance between them. I think we've done incredible, you know, asked the public to participate, and participation has been relatively minimal. My concern here, just reading this, and I've got a note here, is this, is this actually asking under policy statements, and just asking for clarification? So residents will be polled for every application to open a retail cannabis store? So that was sort of my understanding, is to consider the views of residents and a description of how those views were gathered and recommended to the clear approval. I'm just wondering, so every time, so if you can just clarify this, so every time there's an application, is there going to be some kind of polling of the community again, whether or not they want that dispensary?
So what the province requires is that the community be consulted?
For everyone that's, for every...
For every application that goes to the province. The recommended ways of doing that essentially fit with our existing planning, public engagement. So looking at a public hearing, or looking at letters that are sent within a certain distance from the proposed location. I forget on what we set that at, but I believe it was 30 meters. And then also looking at other methods that we already employ that, that as local government are, the way we ask the public their opinion. I also did want to say that the policy sets out what we would do as staff, and the delegation piece looks to treat this new multi-billion-dollar industry the same way as we treat other similar businesses, in that we would have a predictable and transparent process for approvals.
Lola.
Thanks, Kevin. My concern is that we have liquor stores on almost every corner in this town, including one right across from the high school. We've already set our rules. Pardon?
Little liquor store.
Okay, they sell liquor and they make liquor. Is it just, oh, they make booze there and they sell liquor. Okay. It's right across from the high school, and we have other liquor stores right on our main street. We have so many liquor stores in this small town. We've already set through our bylaws around setbacks. And now I think by doing it this way, by increasing these, you know, heavy-handedness, we're forcing these small businesses back underground. And I'm, I just don't understand why, why we're having to do this. I think we've made our rules and let it go, and let we, let these businesses just open up and do their business without further complicating it and putting more pressure on council and staff, and also getting all the anti-vigilantes in town who are the naysayers to be involved every time another business wants to open up, another dispensary wants to open up.
It's provincial legislation, it's a choice.
Counselor Hammond, Counselor Groh, and gentlemen in the back room.
Yeah, council is already, the public has been engaged. They've already gave their recommendations on zoning and where they would like to see these located. The zones have already been determined, so in the downtown core is commercial, and then there's commercial residential, and then there's industrial, which would be processing. Those zones are already set out on a map. The federal government has legalized these businesses. There are rules and regulations on how far they have to be from the main highway. And, you know, if a new business opened up a shoe store, we would not be going to the public, asking them for their opinion on whether they thought that shoe store was at the right location. These are legal businesses. If they have a legal business license, and they're within the zones that the community has already been engaged in and determined where those zones should be, I can't see why we're treating them differently. They're, they're, it's the same as the liquor stores. They have to be so far apart. Licensed premises have to be so far apart. You cannot have two dispensaries within 100 meters of each other. You know, those rules are already set out, and so I'm not sure what we're going to gain by having to, I just don't even think we can keep taking it back every time one person puts an application, seeing as it's a legal business.
Counselor Groh, gentleman in the back, and then Counselor Butler.
Okay, on the request for decision on the front page that says, under benefits and impacts general, this outlines process for delivering recommendations to the LCRB on retail cannabis stores. Community engagement, so Policy 5004 mandates staff to engage residents and afford delivering their recommendations to the LCRB. And then Bylaw 2053, as well as Policy 5004, a highly predictable and fair process. So basically, it's kind of in between what Counselor Ross and Counselor Hammond are talking about. It's that staff proposes to handle the recommendations in a similar manner to business licensing and planning permit. The initial approval is made at staff level, and it's done to a delegation by law, and ensures a predictable and fair process that allows the business committee to make informed decisions when deciding whether to locate that or not. So just wanted to point that out.
So I was looking at this last night, and I'm curious if you can tell me how this is different from the process that a new liquor distribution outlet, liquor store would have to go through. Like, is it different anyway? Like, you have to do the public consultation and stuff? Can somebody enlighten me if there's any difference?
It's different because it has a different regulation from the province that specifically requires this element of public consultation, or the same. So the, while the province regulates the number of liquor licenses, that a lot of that is tied to the actual liquor licensing regulation, whereas with cannabis, we have stat zones to do a similar thing in terms of distance between it, where we might allow them. So it's two separate streams. It's under the same regulation branch now, but it is two separate application processes and considered differently by the province.
But I mean, in terms of the hoops that the applicant would have to go through, and the city would have to in turn go through, is it really all that different? Like, if a liquor store, if somebody wants to put up a liquor store here, does there have to be public consultation in the area?
Yeah, so, so right now, a lot of those pieces, if they're required, are taken care by the province for liquor. And so they have given more of that piece to local government for cannabis.
Okay, thank you.
So just for clarification to Kevin, what I'm understanding is that the province is requiring either staff or council to do a public consultation process before recommending a business license. So this bylaw is just saying that we're going to let staff do that consultation process, rather than council do that consult. Either way, we still have to consult before we make a recommendation. Is that right?
What the delegation of responsibility, authority does is allow staff to make the initial recommendation, and then if the applicant is not satisfied with that recommendation, they would bring it back to council. And then what the policy does is outlines the, basically the basis for staff's recommendation, in that they would go out to public consultation. And that consultation is mandated by the province, so there needs to be some sort of a public consultation. However, council via this policy can, can set the parameters that staff would look to for going through that consultation.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you for the clarification, Kevin. Yeah, so you still have to go through the process regardless, because that's provincially mandated, and that was what I was trying to say when I first spoke. Somebody has to do that process. But the final, in the final analysis, the license granting either comes down to the delegate, or it comes down to council. And it's interesting that some other councillors here have brought up the distillery on the corner there by the high school, because I drive by that distillery every day and wish that darn thing wasn't there, because of the message that it sends to the kids right across the high school. And I think if council were to maintain the ability to look at the licensing applications that come in, they could possibly circumvent establishments like that going up in places. And yes, I know the bylaws say it's got to be 30 meters from here and 100 meters from there, but I still think the council needs to maintain control of this. We are, this is brand-new legislation. We are dealing with a substance that heretofore has, has put people in jail. Okay, so it's not as if this is not quote-unquote "an issue" for people. It still is an issue for people. And for the time being, I think it would really behoove council to take on the responsibility of doing this on behalf of the citizens of their community until such time as it does become as common as, say, a liquor store on the corner. But there are many, many things to be worked out concerning cannabis. The government has set these parameters in place because they understand and know that people in the country are grappling with how this heretofore illegal substance is being introduced into a legal market. I think a council should not abdicate their responsibility to speak on behalf of the citizens in this issue, especially when legislation gives them the opportunity to do so. in this issue, especially when legislation gives them the opportunity to do so.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. I think that the bylaw and policy together gives me comfort that our staff would come back to council if the, if it was required. I don't want to start micromanaging. I have every confidence that our, our management team are more than capable of, of making those kinds of decisions. And if they had concerns or queries, that council as a, as a whole would be, be consulted. So I don't have an issue with the, the recommendations.
And as a follow-up to that, staff always makes their recommendations to council. That is their role. Counselor Hammond, is there anything to add today?
I'm quite happy with the zoning that went out to public for consultation. They came back, told us where they wanted to see it. It was never a big issue. And the two counselors that are so concerned about having a distillery on the corner across from the high school, how do you feel about selling wine in the grocery stores? You know, you're afraid of the kids being, seeing this stuff. Alcohol, you can buy wine in a grocery store. So I'm really not sure what the big deal is. And I just think we're just blowing this right out of proportion. The community has taken an interest as much as it was by recommending where they wanted to see these things located. And as long as they follow within the guidelines of their, their business license and their application, I really don't see a big deal.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Kate Phyllis for the Gazette. So just to make sure I'm understanding this here, so council has already seen and approved the zoning for cannabis, the setbacks, the signage, all of that. Council's approved that and that's done. So per this proposed, is it a policy or a bylaw? I guess both. Council would take all of that into consideration and make a recommendation. And theoretically, that recommendation would be to approve it as long as it meets council standards. Is that correct?
But council would...
Well, no, but as long as it meets the standards that council has already approved, that's by, by council standards.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
And...
Okay. Okay. Kevin. So the language and the provincial regulation is that each application for a license is considered individually. And any recommendations prior to that for the same property, for instance, would not give any precedence to that proposed location. I would take that to also imply that given the city's zoning and, and, well, the zoning couldn't be circumvented certainly, within the allowed area, it would still be that each application would be considered individually. And that the recommendation does stand alone from the zoning bylaw, although that will factor into it.
Okay.
But it still has to fall legislatively within the boundaries of the province, their recommendations.
That's correct.
Right. I guess as a follow-up then, if I may, so theoretically, if a business was proposed and it met all of the provincial requirements and it met all of the municipal requirements that we've set in place through the bylaw and things like that, would staff then have any grounds to deny that proposal?
Public input.
Public input? Would that be enough? And what would that standard then be? Because, I mean, 250 people and 50 of them saying no?
The process for public notification would be very similar to other processes that we use in the planning procedures, as Kevin has stated. It's, it's a little tricky because they can't be located within a certain distance of each other. They can't be located within a certain distance of youth-centered facilities. They can't be located within community use. And so what can happen is that, what happens if a youth-centered facility moves in? What happens if we go for notifications and we find out that there's a daycare that's already been planned to go in next door? So the public notification process, it's not necessarily going to be about public opinion so much as it's going to be about ensuring that that is going to be a compatible use in that neighborhood. And we're going to come up against opposition. It's, it's new. And, you know, there will sometimes just be opposition just on, on the grounds of what it is. But the purpose for us is to ensure that it's going to meet our bylaws and meet the policies that the council and staff...
Gentlemen in the back room.
Just more of a clarification of what my colleague was asking. If council says no, it's dead, right? Am I correct? That was my reading. I'm trying to find out where I might have gotten that from, but in this process, the province will go with what council says. So if council says, "We didn't want this," or a public consultation says, "No, we derived that kind of result from what we consulted," or whatever, then it doesn't go any further, right? Am I wrong?
Well, you would stop it.
But there would have factual data to back that up, for the reasoning behind it.
No, I understand that. But if the province hears from the council, "We don't back this. We don't think it should work," then it's a dead issue, am I right?
But again, how could council make such a decision based on nothing? There has to be some kind of...
No, I understand. No, I'm not saying by fiat or by intention or, or whatever, but if council has decided, rightly or wrongly, in the eyes of the public, but if council has decided based on all of the gap information available to them and the public consultation and everything else, that they are not going to back this, the province won't even consider it. Am I right in that?
I don't know.
Tough question.
Having read, having read the legislation, I'm pretty sure that that's, that that's correct. However, if there's a delegate that makes a recommendation to the government or that it's, that, no, they don't want the license, then the applicant can come to the council of that municipality and ask to have it reconsidered. That's the way I understand it. But in the end, the government liquor board, what they call themselves, they have the final say.
Right.
Bottom line.
So if we had a, if we end up with a council, much like New Denver didn't want to have cell phone towers in the community because of concerns about electromagnetic frequencies, et cetera, et cetera, and they tried to put that off for a while, if we had a council that garnered that kind of support from the community that they did not want pot sales into the town, and they could come up with whatever reasons that made sense to them and sounded good on paper, then we could end up being the town where everybody has to go to the next town to buy pot. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. That's all you wanted.
Counselor Crogg, Counselor Butler.
Okay. Just wanted to, because I haven't spoken, just wanted to quickly address the distillery across from the high school because it's been brought up numerous times. And brought up this morning was what kind of message does that send to the kids? Could send a message that if you're an entrepreneur, you can end up becoming an award-winning distiller, right? Kids at the high school are not stupid. They're not looking at, ooh, it's a distillery. Drink some whiskey. Yeah. Definitely that way. So it's not an issue.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah. So we were talking earlier this morning about bylaw fraction of a man parked in a fifth wheel selling drugs in our back alley. And in a small town, we tend to start to know who our main drug dealers are, even though the RCMP allow them to operate. What if one of those people were to come and get a business license? And what if they even have a record for selling meth and coke and different things? Are we allowed to deny a business license based on a person's criminal record?
Like, if so-and-so, we all know who they are, comes in us for...
I guess the authority having jurisdiction would be able to answer that one.
I'm assuming that we'd get into some sort of human rights issue.
Yeah. Exactly. I think this is beyond the scope of our...
So we can't deny them?
This is beyond the scope of our...
As long as they're selling a legal substance, they still have to sell a legal substance.
But yeah, what else is going on the back door if it's our local drug dealer?
We're not police.
Yeah. You don't have control of that.
Your worship, it's, it's basically called to follow the rules. You have rules and criteria set up on a particular bylaw and the legislation. If they're not following, then it goes to another, another...
But we know how hard it is to shut them down. I mean, they're operating in our park, and we know it, and we're talking about it. That's not our fault. That's not our fault. But we don't want to enable that with new businesses opening up.
It's a little limiting then.
Well, we are hoping and trying to establish that these are legalized businesses. Legalized businesses, Counselor Butler. The other way you're, you're referring to this is illegal operation. So a fellow could be indicating that he's selling bicycles, that he's selling drugs out the back door. We have no control for that. Now we're dealing with an issue where we're talking about legalized businesses and how we're going to approach it. That's my view of how I see it.
Keep it, one quick one. Go ahead. Keep in mind that before, prior to legalization, most of the people working in the industry are working in an illegal industry. And they may have criminal records, but it's probably for that industry that was illegal, which won't be.
And again...
Usually when you're dealing with drug dealing, you're not just dealing with cannabis. You're dealing with everything that goes along with it, the guns and the coke as well.
But what we're looking at here is a legalized businesses opening to hopefully diminish the underground economy. Hopefully, that's the hope that they need. Will it happen?
Collect taxes.
Gentlemen in the back room.
I would just point out that usually statement by Counselor Butler. So when documentary filmmakers wanted to make a film about how cannabis can help the local economy, they looked for a community that was not rife with gangs and guns and violence and stuff like that. But cannabis was very, very present and did do a boost to the community. And they picked our community for good reason. We're not sorry.
And we had people arrested for, for flying drugs across our border from this community as well.
No, no, I understand that. But, but smuggling drugs across the border is a big difference from actually carrying around guns and, and holding people up. I'm just pointing out that the documentary cannabis was shot here for a particular reason. It was that we are not the community that, we do not have the kind of issues that you're mentioning. That's all. That was my point.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. We're talking about dispensaries for the legalized marijuana. And somehow, we've gotten off on a tangent about other illegal drugs and gun. I have no knowledge that that is what happens. Maybe other people do from their own experiences. I don't know. But I'd like to bring us back to the issue that we are discussing, which is the recommendation for our management team. And I would like to ask for the question to be called.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler are opposed. Motion is carried. So now we follow up to the second follow-up on that recommendation, which is the committee that will recommend to council to adopt policy 1504, retail cannabis license recommendation at the September 4th, 2018 regular meeting. Who votes? Counselor Ross. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Wasn't that one motion? Or two?
Counselor Tripp opposed. Counselor Butler, you had your hand up. Was that to ask a question or...
I'm opposing it, but it was written here as one motion. It wasn't two motions.
Well, they all were broken into. Okay. Motion is carried. Counselor Butler and Counselor Tripp are opposed. All right. Moving on to, we have no information, of course, on this late question periods from the public. Go ahead.
Yes, worship. Thank you, Kate Phyllis for the Gazette. Just back to policy 2050, the remuneration, remuneration. I just, I had to read that to realize it was remuneration. So the first recommendation, did anything happen on that? I know we passed the second, but what about the first?
It, it passed. It passed to recommend it to appoint a committee.
Yeah, but the committee was never appointed.
Okay, so did...
To consider, to consider. The actual wording is to consider the appointment of a committee.
So council considered it and decided not to appoint a committee? Am I understanding? No, it's not appointed.
No, it's still up in...
So is council going to appoint a committee or not?
Thank you, Kate.
Yes or no?
Can we ask the recording secretary to read that? It's recommending it to council, so it has to go to a regular meeting to pass that motion. So the way I voted on it was that the committee of the whole recommends to council to consider the appointment. So that decision has to be made at a regular council meeting.
So that, and then that will go forward to the September 4th meeting?
Correct.
When you will either appoint a committee or not at that point?
No, I think tonight's meeting because we have to appoint the committee now in order to have that committee's feedback by September 4th.
Daniel?
To our corporate officer. Again, bringing it back to some of the work the committee is supposed to do, if we follow our policy, is actually what Ms. Rhodes already did, which is basically analyze other municipalities and the averages. So that would be a committee that would have to meet several times to figure all of this out, then bring it back to council. Again, this is what I'm saying, this isn't a simple one because you're supposed to build it out of five members of the public. It's not the greatest policy the way I read it earlier, and I think it was just a copy from some other municipality as one talked at one point. What I wanted to say earlier too is Nelson did go through this process. They started it about May. They had a recommendation come to council just now. I think it was last week or the week before. It wasn't the Nelson Star. The council did not listen to the recommendation of the committee.
Great.
And gave the double the raise.
Oh.
So the committee recommended a certain amount increase to offset the taxation changes, I believe, and maybe a small bump for the cost of living. Council thought it was better to give them, for the next council, more money. There is a Nelson Star, I believe, has an article if you want to read up on that. So my recommendation was, council has to, has to still provide a number amount that Ms. Rhodes needs to put into this. So I can bring this as a late item tonight for, like, again, we're, in my opinion, we're too late for the committee. We're just too late.
So basically, we're going back almost to status quo, which it was in the past, where the previous council would recommend an increase, a freezing, or whatever for the future council to come. So that's what we're aiming.
That's exactly what we're asking for from the council.
Exactly. Because the timelines do not allow to form a committee at this point in time. Go ahead.
Can I follow up on that? Thank you, your worship. So this didn't really answer my question, which is, is there going to be a committee? No. Definitively, no committee.
Well, just by the responses we've just heard, there's not enough time allowance to be able to form a committee.
Okay. So then that's my follow-up question is, I'm not seeing a timeline in any of the documentation here. So what is that timeline? Is it the election?
No.
Why don't, why isn't there time?
Yeah. So this, this item has to go for first three readings to the September 4th council meeting. And then it would go to final, final reading. I think it's around the 17th or something like that, September 17th, to be in place for the election. So it is, and it only starts, the bylaw only takes effect as of January 1st for the new council. Correct? Yeah.
So at this particular point in time for this year, for this council, we will be doing it status quo again as it passes?
Yeah. There's no change, it's nothing.
Okay. Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So we passed the motion that says the committee of the whole recommends the council to consider the appointment of a committee. We considered, we all voted for that, but the actual work of that committee, we have advocated doing because really there isn't any more point in getting it done because we can't don't have the time to get the people. And furthermore, Julia has pretty much done the bulk of the work. However, does council still need to spend at least a few minutes coming up with some, whether we do that in camera, whether we do that ad hoc? Does this have to be done in a public meeting? We still have to give you, we have to give you direction.
Yes.
And I would assume that you would want the direction prior to the September 4th meeting when you're going to bring back the council remuneration expenses. So do we need to agree as a council how we are going to get to the work of providing the definitive, absolute direction, i.e., numbers, to those guys?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. We do need those numbers to include them in the bylaw. Ms. Rhodes can put in the average that for, that she was considering as the report lays out, the two options that were there. But it would be nice if we can bring a late item tonight to council where council briefly discusses that recommendation and gives the go-ahead to go to the first, second, third reading.
Just for the record, previous council did not make any recommendations for this council if there's going to be increases in salary, because I had spoken in long line with this with our former CAO. And the option there was for this council to give itself a... And the option there was for this council to give itself a raise. And my recommendation was definitely not, we're not going to do that in a public eye. So getting back quickly to what we discussed earlier, for those elected officials that want to become elected officials, they know what they're getting and what they're going to be getting is a salary. If it's a freeze on salary for the future council, they'll just have to come in and want to do it for the right reasons. Otherwise, not for the money. Councilor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify too, because it had come up before. We see council salary and we see the mayor's salary. But what is the salary for the regional district rep, for whoever on council or the mayor sits at the regional district table? How much are they compensated?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe it's, the numbers are pretty close to what they are here. There's a stipend again, there's a, they have a different procedure because they award, let's say, salaries for every meeting you attend. So it's a different format altogether. There's a basic salary, a stipend, then there's a technical fee. There's all kinds of different...
Are you talking about the area director?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
She's asking about the rep from council.
Like, how much do you guys get paid when you go to the regional district?
That's what I'm talking about, the regional director. That's what I'm talking about, as a director.
But I think you should have been compensated for that meeting you attended, because that's...
I attended more than one meeting, Councilor Butler.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking, how much do you get?
I've never been compensated anything for any of the work I've done for the R D K P, ever.
But you're supposed to.
Yeah.
I've never, I've never been told that. I've never had anything, I've never been compensated for my...
So that's my question, I guess, to the C A O then. How much is our regional district rep compensated?
Somebody use a microphone.
Yeah, it's an amount that I don't have in front of me right now, but I can get you to slip it.
I mean, I am the alternate, and I haven't attended several meetings. I've never been compensated.
Because it's my understanding that the regional district rep makes at least over fifteen thousand.
Really?
Yeah.
That's if they attend every single meeting?
And like you said, it's per meeting that's attended. So who's getting paid for that?
That would be for the mayor.
Whoever attends the meeting gets that. So if you've attended a meeting, you can still claw it back.
Who might claw it back from?
Regional district.
But they paid it out to who?
If nobody attended.
If I didn't attend, you just fill out that form.
Being the answer to that. Oh, well, I was never told that. And you know what? Consider it a service to the community.
There you go. Exactly my point. Councilor Ross, being a former director.
The alternate would get paid for any meetings they attend, including mileage. At every meeting, there is either a pile of claim forms. And sometimes they're actually put on everybody's desk. It's too bad that Councilor Ross wasn't aware or informed of that. But that's how it works. You fill out the thing and you send it in. Or they collect them at the end of the meeting and could still fill one out.
Yeah, that's not a problem, because I can get you a form, fill it out. I'll give it to Teresa for you on your behalf. There's no, there's no timeline. Normally, it's supposed to be done monthly. But I know myself, I've done it sometimes accumulative for two, three months. Director Russell has done the same, and it's, there's no criteria there, so...
Let me just clarify about it. Okay, so when I attend R D K P meetings, I'm often offered a form to claim my mileage only. I've never been told that I can get a stipend for spending the entire day.
Not a stipend, a meeting fee.
A meeting fee. I've never been told I get a meeting fee, even though sometimes it's the entire day. And often I will carpool with Vicky G. out of Midway. I have driven myself to Trailville on one occasion. But I was never told that I get a daily meeting fee. That was never something that I even realized I was eligible for.
Yeah, it's eighty, eighty, I think, eighty-nine oh eight.
Right. Well, at this point, at this late in four years, and having attended, I don't even have any meetings, it's a gift. So there you go.
Go ahead, Dee.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to follow back up on your comments that people shouldn't do it for the money, but for the public service. As someone under the age of thirty, that does concern me a little bit.
I'm not under thirty.
I am under the age of thirty. And I wonder about council's perspective on that. I mean, by and large, no offense, but you guys are an older crowd. And so do you have any concerns that by keeping council remuneration so low, you effectively discount people who do have to work for a living? And that by doing so, you do end up with, I think, a specific kind of perspective? It does keep certain people out of the running inherently. Is there any concern around that? I'm interested for a perspective.
None whatsoever, not in my particular case, because I do own corporations too as my own business. And I'm still here a man, so bottom line is, it's quite simple. I don't think, if you have an election platform, a mandate that you're running for, that should be your main goal. You shouldn't be doing it for the money. That's the reasoning behind my logic behind it, because you're doing a service to the community. And that's why going back in time, they called it a stipend, and it was so minimal, it had no significance whatsoever. And you still had a lot of very qualified elected officials in office that did a stupendous job for every community that they served.
I guess it's not about the qualifications of the people, but running, so much as making sure that a variety of people are able to run.
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying. It's not the qualifications I'm referring to either. I'm referring to the incentive, the intent of why you want to be a mayor or a councillor, is to serve your community. So, you know, you can have the same situation in military. There's different aspects of it where you want to serve your country or your... Councilor Ross.
Thanks, Kate. I did mention that much about remuneration. And I do think it is a barrier to participation when the remuneration is so low. It is a service to our community, but it also has incredible value. And to attract young, educated, progressive folks to council is really important. And I would love to see people be more adequately compensated so that they can step upon, step into these positions. I am self-employed. I have no, I've never had, because I've been self-employed my entire adult life. And it is a problem for me. And I, it is, it is a barrier for me. I don't own corporations. I have nobody taking care of me, except for myself. And I love this work. I love, I love this kind of work. But it is financially very difficult. I think it would be wonderful if we could, because the amount of work that's being downloaded onto these seats is incredibly onerous. We need people who are educated, who have good life experiences, and have diverse views. And I would love to see somebody like yourself taking up these seats. And my kids are, all three of my kids are university educated. They're smart. There's no way that they could ever afford to do this work. And what happens is it's somewhat of privilege to sit at this seat, so you have to have a certain amount of financial privilege or somebody at home taking care of you. For me, that's not the case, but I still love doing this work. And I've worked hard and I've saved money, and I can afford to live, you know. You know, so I mean, I do have privilege, for sure. But I would like to see remuneration increased and just change the vision of what it means to be a city councillor. I do want it frozen, because we can't afford it in this town. That's the problem. We need to be compensated. But we can. Someone's going to pay for it.
And just to clarify too, there's, if a young person is employed, there's nothing stating, once they become a councillor, that they have to give up their employment. So, you know, you may be restricted, or you may have to cut back on some hours, or you may miss out on some meetings. But it doesn't disqualify you if you have employment.
Just to think about it, Sister Ross.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been asked over the years. And then the question is, why are councils so old, right?
That was the question.
The reason is, no, like, old and working. There's been councils of individuals that were retired. So you would end up with all of these retired people. I don't think it's the money, because unless you're in Vancouver, while you can't afford to live there, but you would get way more remuneration than it would be a job that you could actually live on. This is not, hence the concept of volunteering for some of it. But take the average, well-educated thirty-year-old. They're busy. They don't, it's, they have so much stuff going on in their lives, everything from family to recreation to all of this stuff, because they're still trying to get a grip on the world. So that's probably more of a reason for younger people not entering, rather than just the money. I've sat at tables for years, and I've always had a job, right? I've sat with retired people. But I think it's, it's not so much the carrot of the money as just, they have better things to do in their world, right? So we're more settled, so we're more likely to have that.
Comment to old age and elderly people in office? It also comes with a great benefit, tremendous life experience.
Yeah, that too.
Councilor Thompson.
I'm only thirty-two years old. Do you think I've got this old hair?
You're a grown man, obviously.
Having worked for the city for twenty-three years, I've sat with councils that couldn't see beyond themselves. In some cases, they weren't, they didn't have any foresight. They weren't prepared to move forward on infrastructure issues, because why should they be paying for something that's going to be used down the road? And as a consequence, here we are with a whole raft of things that need to be fixed and paid for, and money borrowed and the like. I want to encourage people who are forward-thinking, not single issuers, but people who are... And I want to encourage the younger people, because this is going to impact their futures as well, the decisions that are made by the people sitting at this table. And you, you can't encourage that without compensating them for. And as others have said, it's, it basically, it is, can be done, a full-time job. And those of us that are sitting here are doing so because we love our community and we want to see it prosper. And we can't do that without the input from others. And so, you know, Councilor Ross has indicated that she's not going to run again. And so that's one seat, for sure, that can be filled in. And hopefully, there's going to be young people encouraged to put their names forward and, you know, vie for a seat on this council. So they're going to need compensation for it. I think the public and the taxpayers have to realize that there is a cost to this. And so I think moving forward, we're going to discuss this remuneration later today. We'll come to a conclusion and a decision.
On the comment of becoming a full-time job, Councilor Thompson, it is a full-time job. Councilor Tripp. And then, gentlemen in the back.
Just one quick observation is, you know, there's seven of us sitting at this table, and we only have a community of just, you know, barely four thousand. And I don't know where the cutoff is for a smaller council configuration. But that's one thing that possibly at the provincial level, you know, if they look at legislating a bit smaller, like, smaller councils for smaller communities, because it does become a cost burden for the city. And I think all of us sitting at this table, we understand that we're costing the taxpayers money to sit here. We cost the taxpayers money when we go to conferences. We cost the taxpayers money through our health care plan, although, you know, the staff all have that too, so it doesn't add too much. But all of those things are burdens on a small community. And we have to look at, okay, you know, every fifteen, twenty thousand dollars is going to add some amount of tax, you know, maybe it's going to add some extra money to the tax base. So, you know, if, you know, if someone were interested, they might want to, you know, go back to, say, the U B C M and talk about, and maybe Neil has some further wisdom about this, but talk about decreasing council sizes for smaller communities.
To the best of my knowledge, Councilor Tripp, that is not due in the province. That's in the charter. Charter pretty much speaks to the amount of council members per capita of a community. I believe it's three thousand, four thousand, somewhere in that range.
It's right around the cutoff.
Yeah, we're at the cutoff, where you miss the four councillors and the mayor. We're just a little bit beyond.
We're just two thousand.
But it's a charter, so it's something that would have to be legislatively changed. We'll just wait and endeavor to change the charter. Les, go ahead.
Yeah, I think part of the concern in terms of this is whether or not somebody, especially a younger person who is not financially well-off or have a mom and dad to take care of them, they can live in the basement while they're doing this, can they give this their full attention? Like you said, sometimes it's a full-time job. Not always, but sometimes it's a full-time job, especially now when the fate of the community is resting on your necks. Really, I'm sure people in the community would rather think that you're actually giving it your full attention, as opposed to you have some other job you have to do four or five days a week. I know when Committee of the Whole was moved, was created and moved to Monday morning, and Councilor Wershagin had a job, and he was one of the people who pointed out that that was going to be a hardship for him, because he'd have to deal with his employer to be able to make this happen. And in a way, I put myself in a similar boat to you in the sense that if I did not have pensions, especially my ex-wife's pension, which just ran out because I turned sixty-five, and support from Lorraine, I wouldn't be able to do this, you know, like, just, I wouldn't be able to afford it. I'd have to do something else for my time, and I probably wouldn't be able to make these dates. So yeah, it's, it's an honor to do this, and I'm sure it's an honor to sit there. It's a community service. But it's also a drain on your pocketbook, a serious drain on your pocketbook.
Speaking to the fact of youth and young generation, that would be dependent on how young you would refer to young, because there's also the experience element that does have to come into play, definitely. Because you do have to have a little bit of experience to be sitting here. You don't want to guess at what you're doing. You're representing a community. Councilor Thompson and Councilor Butler.
I hear what you're saying about the Committee of the Whole on Monday mornings. Through years, the off Monday, we call it the off Monday evening, were the committees of the whole meetings. So, you know, perhaps the new council might want to have a look at changing the prestige bylaw to make that change. I don't know. But I hear what you're saying on young people, younger people who have full-time jobs.
Or the C A O.
And, Your Worship, I was going to speak relatively to the same thing that Councilor Thompson just talked about, is that depending on what the makeup of the next council is, they have that ability to change the times of their meetings and to change what it looks like. They, back in the day, I think, Councilor Thompson was talking about that they had a primary committee meeting that came at seven o'clock, that was followed by a regular meeting, and that was once a month, and then it would change over. So council does have that attitude to be able to decide if they need to change those times.
Councilor Butler, Les.
And it's not just the committee as a whole, and the regular meetings, we've been having in-camera meetings once a week. And with what's going on right now, there's a necessity to have meetings quickly. And if you've got a job, you can't just ditch your job. And you can't just ditch the meeting either. They're important to be at. So then there's committees. This council hasn't believed in committees. The mayor hasn't formed any, but most councils do have committees that you're required to attend, so you either sit on one or two committees. So you've got those meetings to attend. You've got public meetings to attend right now at the high school. There's lots of things going on. And being self-employed gives you that opportunity to be flexible. But if you're holding down a regular job with an employer, not a chance. And you do great public service to the community by the reports that you give us in the newspaper. Would you be willing to do that for, you know, half your pay?
Exactly.
There's lots of people that do good service for the community, but we still expect them to be paid. I know a friend of mine on the Ferny Council, when he first got elected, he brought forward a motion. He told me, decrease their salary to thirty-five thousand a year. And I said, what, are you even sane? And he's the one that said to me, well, listen, you want to attract good people to this position, you got to pay them. Yeah, and I know when we were at the last convention, I was talking with Nelson, and this issue came up. And I can see why they voted the way they did, because they were working out how much they got paid, and it's about five dollars an hour. So, yeah, I can see why Nelson made that motion.
Well, you can still attract good people, depending on what, how zealous you are for what you're... what your aim and your goals are for what you want to do for your community.
So there was a short burst of comments on this topic by one of the people viewing on here. And just to distill it and add something to it is that one reason G F cannot pay council higher wages is that G F is a depressed economy and councils past and present have not put enough economic solutions into play. And the next one, he says, is basically if council was more aggressively pursuing economic opportunities instead of considering themselves a burden, it would find a better public response to the remuneration. So what I'm curious about is, could you come up with some system where if you could demonstrate that you have attracted more economic investment in the community and therefore you have boosted the tax input into the payment, that there could be some kind of bounty that you could all benefit from?
Nepotism, correction, and kickbacks are the three words that come to it.
Well, it's just the idea. It's an incentive to get you guys to, or whoever proposes you to-
But look at today's managers' report. We're top seventy-five percent in building for the entire last year up to this third year.
I'm just saying, if there was some metric that the public could understand.
I'm going to make a comment to that, Les.
Okay.
This council unfortunately, as you are totally aware of, wasn't, this city was not a very viable aspect to draw business considering council had so much, so many problems amongst themselves. As an investor, would you really want to come to a community like that in those days, in those days of past? We have changed. We have tried. We are drawing a lot. Obviously, the numbers are showing it. But on the onslaught, there was so much council dispute. You have it on your own videos.
Well, in a sense, you're making my point. If council was demonstrably, positively influencing the community and it was a metric that could be measured, that the public could see, then maybe they'd be onside with either increasing your remuneration or putting some sort of bonus in there that you could all benefit from because you did a good job last financial quarter or last year. That's just a wacky suggestion.
Exactly. All right. I really-
I just want to say, Les, that I'm sure you've noticed it. In two thousand and twelve, I started to see a change in the city in the direction it was going. I think from two thousand and four, when I moved here to two thousand and twelve, I, it was stagnant. I didn't see anything happening. There was no growth. There was, there was nothing. And then I started to see momentum. That's why I got involved with council because I liked what I saw. I liked, I liked what was going on and council was changing direction and they were being, they were, they were going after industry and, and business and growth. And it was exciting. So, I mean, with this flood, it's kind of holding us down, but don't think that things stopped altogether. There are things happening and they'll continue to happen. So this council is very aware of the need to divers our industry and expand our tax bases.
We welcome Ken.
And also we have a great revitalization of our staff. All our managers, succession planning has worked successfully. We've got a lot of new, younger generation coming in our staff and managers. And it shows, it shows the movement of, of how we're so well-groomed now as staff and managers. I mean, we're getting the recommendations to council and don't worry, I don't want most of them to get such a big head that you can't get it through the door. But in reality, we have a great staff now that has been manicured, where very well and we're still growing. And it shows by the numbers, we are drawing people here.
I have one last thing to point. Nothing to do with this. I don't want to flog it. Okay, I won't say that. Okay. Just so that you and the public are aware, when I moved here in two thousand and four, the mayor at the time was Jake Raven. And I also volunteered at the community access TV and Jake had the Jake Raven Show and he had a business and he was the mayor. And like it, like him or not, he was our mayor. And he just recently passed away. And his funeral will be Friday afternoon at the First Baptist for those who might want to show their respects. I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Is there any other major issues other than what we've been beating to death here? And otherwise, I'm going to call motion to adjourn. Counselor Ross, all those in favor. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.